You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 10th meeting for the Kingsford Heights Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
I'd like to call this meeting to a quarter. Please turn the ringers off on your cell phones. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe Maleka has a sign and sheet back there. I don't know if everyone has signed in or not. And we do have all council members accounted for, plus the attorney and the court treasurer. Departmental reports, please, department.
Evening, everybody. I forgot the pass off on the stats for last month. We only had a level of cultural service, so really minimal. I do have a few parting words I'd like to say, but before I do that, one of the things that we, in law enforcement, we don't always get thanked for some of the things that we do. In doing so, I have a letter of commendation here for Chief Deputy Marshal Anna Stadia Gellerardi. If you'll step up here for me. Some of the things we do, we don't get noticed, but over the last several months, I'll just read the commendation to her. Chief Deputy Marshal Anna Stadia Gellerardi is awarded the following letter of commendation for successfully conducting numerous criminal cases involving the abuse of children. Chief Deputy Gellerardi spent numerous months conducting in-depth interviews, participated with joint agency investigations, and partnered with local law enforcement agencies to ensure that the cases were brought to the LaPorte County Prosecutor's Office. These cases ultimately led to the charges of the individuals involved. Chief Deputy Gellerardi displayed professionalism and conducted herself with compassion and dedication throughout the investigations. October 24th, 2025.
I have words after your name.
Oh, okay. So, some parting words for me. If everybody doesn't know, this is my last full day as town marshal. Just wanted to take a few minutes to give some closing remarks. It's been a privilege and honor to work for the citizens of Kingsford Heights for almost three years. I believe that during this time, the department has made numerous positive improvements. They've seen a reduction in crime, improved the departmental organization, and increased community police relations. Some of the improvements included bringing the department's salaries up to and equal to other departments in the county, obtaining over $30,000 in donated equipment, which includes a solar radar sign, and body worn cameras, both of which will help with the protection of the town and its residents. Updated department fleet vehicle with two new squad cars, which have smaller engines, allowing them to save the town thousands of dollars in yearly fuel consumption. We obtained solar caution traffic lights to help reduce speeding on major avenues of town. We updated our less than lethal equipment, obtained required officer training through growing relationships with other local law enforcement agencies, which also saved the department thousands of dollars in training costs. And it also allows us to establish new relations between LaPorte County Prosecutor's Office and other law enforcement agencies in the county. We introduced a flock camera system to the community, which helps identify suspect vehicles, provide an accurate count of vehicles coming into town. We obtained the department's first police certified school resource officer. This was done in order to provide continuing positive relationship and interaction with children of the town. This has provided an overall very positive response from teachers, childrens, and parents. We were able to obtain three AEDs, the Automated External Defibrillators, for use in police vehicles costing an average of $2,000 each, but these also were donated to the town at no cost. Overall, the above actions and infrastructure improvements were done with the best interest of the residents of Kingsford Heights. I believe that the department is heading in the right direction, as it too is growing alongside the town. In ending, I would like to thank obviously my family, my wife, my kids and grandkids. And special thanks to Chief Deputy Marshal Anna Gellerardi. She has been an exceptional officer and friend for the last three years. I hope I leave her with the information and knowledge that will help her in the career in law enforcement. To Malika and Laura from the clerk's office, thank you for your patience, your willingness to help, and of course answering a lot of questions when it came to budgets and pay. To Randy and the hardworking guys at the utility department, I greatly appreciate the assistance and help you guys have always given me and us at the department and your dedication you have to this town. To Amber, thank you for always helping with the legal questions I had, and there were a lot of them. And to the members of the town council, thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve in this capacity. To the citizens of Kingsford Heights, I appreciate the fact that you welcomed me and allowed me to serve this community as the chief marshal. Even if it was for just a short time, I hope that you continue to support this department and all those who serve in the future. Now, I would like to introduce obviously Matt Wolf as the individual selected by the town council to replace me. I've known Matt for several years now, and he will be an exceptional chief and leader, not only to the community, but for the future of this department. Chief Marshal Wolf.
Good evening. As my first official act as town marshal, I would again like to thank Jeff for everything he's done for this county for the last 30-plus years and especially the last years with the Heights. It's a tough act to follow, but I want to thank you guys for instilling your trust and confidence in me to carry on with what Jeff and Anna have started, hopefully to continue and improve and grow right alongside the town.
Okay, let's make this as short and sweet, but I just have a few words for Jeff. First of all, thank you for all of your support. It's not going to be the same without you, so I just wanted to kind of give you something, some words of encouragement and some words of thanks before you depart. You've served, like Matt said, your community for longer than any of us can even imagine, both with Michigan City and here in Kingsford Heights, and now it's finally time to hang up the badge, I hope. I am so happy for you, but I can't imagine working here without you. Oh my God, I suppose I'm going to cry. Your 30-plus years, you know, these three have been a drop in the bucket, but that's been my whole career, so I want to thank you for making such a huge impact on how this has started for me. You've been my mentor, my guide, and honestly, the best boss anyone could ask for. You made me know that policing wasn't just about enforcing the law and doing our duties every day, it was about helping people, how we treat everyone with respect, and always doing the right thing even when it's not the easy thing. Like I said, those three years doesn't touch the 30 years. These three years haven't touched the 30 years that you spent over there, to you, but that has been the entire time for me, and you have made a huge difference in how I'm going to go about the rest of my career. Your calm, your steady, and you bring people together, you lead by example, and you lead your community in a positive way, and each one of us has been lucky enough to have worked with you. So I'm going to miss you around here, but I'm also excited for Matt, who has been my friend and someone that I know is going to do a wonderful job in your place, and I hope that you know you've earned the next chapter, filled with no more working, car projects, and relaxing, not bothering Trista too much, and zero radio calls. So congratulations and thank you for everything.
Very nice.
I'm just a staff, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's everything from the police department?
I think it's good.
All right. Very nice. Fire department.
Good evening, Ryan Gunn. As the fire department and a friend, I want to congratulate Jeff on 34 days of service. Congratulations, well served, thank you very much. And welcome Matt. I've known Matt now probably two years or so, three years. He's become a friend, he's a great officer. We're very happy to have him, so congratulations to him as well. As far as the fire department goes, nothing much to report, other than coal volume obviously is increasing with the weather. Just be safe out there, and I dropped off to Malika the other day another copy of the contract, so you guys can peruse that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. My only question about the contract. Aren't municipal government units, period, schools, et cetera, libraries, aren't we all exempt from late fees?
You read my mind, I wasn't going to bring that up. I would not, I would recommend removal of the late fee component.
That was just a copy of.
Yeah. I saw that one sentence, and that was going to be, I was going to bring that up, but I can bring it up now. I would recommend removal of that. The other thing I would do is just recommend that the fire department provide the town with a copy of their certificate of insurance, since it's mentioned that the town would be named as an additional insurer.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, just the removal of that one sentence.
I'll drop that off to you on Wednesday, I'm not going to be around tomorrow, but I'll update it, remove the late fees, and then.
Yeah, that's in paragraph eight, and it's only, it's the last sentence.
Yeah, it's just one sentence.
Can I bring a copy of the insurance?
Thank you. Utilities.
I really don't have too much to discuss, I just want to thank, congratulate Matt on his new position. I'd known him for three years working here, and when he pulled me over. The company that came in and grounded stumps for us, they gave us a quote for approximately 20 stumps to be grounded in the well field. It was for $1,500, so I was seeing what the council thought about that.
How many stumps?
20. We've been pulling the stumps, but these stumps are in a sensitive area where there's underground power, underground conduits, and it'd be better than damaging the infrastructure if us just pulling it.
And that would come out of what?
The water department.
How much was the reading?
$1,500. $1,500.
Anybody got any objection to it?
Come through operation.
So is that a motion to approve?
Motion to, I guess the next steps, stump stunt. How many, how many are there, Mr.?
20.
20? And $1,500?
Yes.
All right.
Tony's stump grinding service, I believe his, it's whites, it's changing, names changing to whites actually, white stump grinding.
And where are they from?
They're from the North Johnson area.
We've used them a lot of times.
Well, they, the town has been using them several years prior to my arrival here.
Is that the same guy was called?
Tony's. Yeah, it used to be Tony's, and now it's Whites.
Wasn't Trusty.
Trusty, Trusty, that's it.
Well, that's one we've always used for the past 15 years or so. They do a good job.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for paying $1,500 out of the water utility for 20 stumps to be removed. Do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
We did receive the new generator at the water tower, but it's not hooked up yet. They still have to place the propane tank and get that connected. They're still working on the wells. One well is done, and it's between 500 to 600 gallons a minute producing, so that's quite an increase from before. That's all I have.
The hookup is also part of the park program?
Yes.
Okay.
For the generator, yes.
And like I said, one thing, thanks, you guys got that on the snow.
Yeah.
There's a heavy snow this winter, so thanks.
That's all I have.
Park board.
We don't really have anything, just a big thank you to Dwayne, who was, he and his wife were the judges for our costume contest. Thank you so much for doing that for the Halloween. But we have our next giveaway on the 22nd. We'll be discussing, we had to postpone our meeting on the 6th, and so it will be coming up this next Monday at 6 o'clock, because my husband and I were not able to be there. So we'll, we have rescheduled it, it'll be placed on Facebook as well, it's placed on Facebook about the cancellation, and at that time, we're going to be talking about the Christmas program that we did last year, and a few other things. Thank you.
We have minutes from November 14th and November 28th. Has everyone?
October.
I'm sorry, October 14th and October 28th. Does anybody have, has everyone had a chance to read them?
I just have one more question. I've seen that there's attachments, exhibit, or attachment A and attachment B, but I don't see them on here.
This is transcript.
Okay. Did you guys see them? I just want to make sure that.
I know they exist, but we don't have them.
Just want to make sure that you've seen them.
Okay, so on the first set, no, on the 14th, the attachment is a transcript and a summary, and on the second one, it's just a transcript?
Because it wasn't, it was only 30 minutes.
Oh, okay. All right. So can you tell us what the difference is between what's written on the 14th and what's the summary?
That's verbatim.
This is, no, the transcript is.
The transcript is verbatim.
Right. What is the difference between what we're handed for the 14th and the summary of the agenda items discussed?
It's just a summary. This is everything that was said in the meeting.
Right.
So that is summarized in the minutes.
This is the summary?
That's the summary.
Okay. So has everyone have basically had a chance to read the minutes from these two meetings?
Waiting for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for 10:14, correct?
Do you want to do them separately? Okay.
We can do them both. I did read both of them.
Second. All right, that's the minutes from the first meeting, October 14th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carried unanimously, now October 28th.
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes for 10:27, 25 also.
All right. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I think that's unanimous too. Approval of claims. The claim docket is in front of us. Joe and I went into the office today, and we looked at every claim and the invoices that went with them. I've got a couple of questions, and they're mostly on the Amazon claims. And is this a copy? Maleka, your copy is in the claim docket. And with your copy? Actually, I can do this copy, where is it? All right. Now you guys, first of all, notice that Maleka has signed off on all the claims. I tried to, I rearranged these just slightly, and I have the claim followed by the invoice that it applies to. And the first two claims total are for $1,247 and then $1,248, and they specify that they're for toilet bowl cleaner, but when you get to the invoice, it's for an iPhone cover. The second two claims are for paper towels, like it says. The third claim, it says supplies, and this is the only claim on the entire claim docket that is just generalized to supplies, and it's for a sweeper. And the fourth claim that says toilet paper is actually for an outdoor Thanksgiving flag and some toilet bowl cleaner tags. So I'm curious, number one, why do the claims differ from the invoice? And number two, are we not still under our purchasing of necessary items only? And a couple of those things, to me, fall under not necessary.
I can say that the iPhone cover was mine. We just got brand new cell phones for the department because we switched carriers, so I had to put, I had to get a case on the phone so it wouldn't break.
All right, but why is it charged to water and sewage?
It's not charged to water and sewage.
If you look at the appropriation numbers compared to the invoice number, it is.
I'll make sure that it gets charged the right way.
Okay.
And then the vacuum, that was, that was me, because, I mean, we, the vacuum we have doesn't suction anything, so I did order a vacuum.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not saying.
No, I know, but I didn't know from where that came from, so.
And then, then at the very end of this pile, there's an invoice for $3,995 that's not on any of the claims. So I just, we, did we lift the necessities only purchase?
Yes, for toilet bowl cleaner.
But where is it on the claim? The $1,247 and $1,248 don't add up to $3,995.
It doesn't, $3,995 is just for toilet bowl cleaner.
I understand that, but the two invoice, the two claims that say toilet bowl cleaner only add up to the $2495. All of the Amazon claims have, and the last time we had Amazon claims, or one of the last times we had Amazon claims, they weren't even on a claim docket, so they're, I don't understand why the Amazon claims are messed up. And I, I don't, okay, Anna explained part of it, but, I mean, and it's not a lot of dollars, but did we get away from essential purchases? Counsel?
Her office is no different than the others, she can spend $500.
We got away from that, but we said essential purchases.
When you say the other departments could determine what they consider essential. Yeah, we said that.
I'm talking about the outside Thanksgiving flag now. That's why I said it's not a lot of dollars, but I don't think there's anybody on this council that would call a decorative flag and.
How much was the flag?
It was $21, that's what I said.
Oh my God, really?
No, no.
Really? $21?
It's not the dollars.
It is, it is. It is, it is. It's the principle of this, $21.
It's the principle of the purchase.
You guys, come on now, Rosalie. You guys go buy stuff, anybody can go buy stuff, but now you, it's picking, you're picking.
I looked at, well, I saw all the mistakes on the Amazon.
Let's deduct them, read them out.
You are out of order, by the way.
You can't throw me out.
Will, if you stay.
You told me I was out of order, and I'm out of order, I'm be quiet, but don't, don't just say stuff like that, please don't.
All right. My point is, you were quite adamant about the purchasing, and you're the one who purchased this, so what kind of example did you set?
Did you really want to answer to that? Really?
I have a couple other questions later on.
I'm sure you do.
All right. So what, you got, how do you correct the Amazon claims, and then what do you do with the one that's not included? Then my other question is, all the first claims are for invoices, the checks are written, the checks are dated before tonight's meeting date, are they mailed yet?
No, they're not.
But they are dated before the meeting?
Yes, they are, because we have to get it together in order for you guys to have the claims, so you can go over it before time, before, ahead of time.
But they can still be dated tonight. There's a place to enter the check date. Okay. I mean, it.
Things to be fixed, those numbers have to be fixed.
Well, I, she can fix the appropriation.
It's not going to change the amount.
It's not going to change the amount, the appropriations have to be corrected, and we can ask to see the corrected claims, even though we're going to approve the amounts, we can ask to see the corrected claims at the next meeting. If someone wants to approve the claims knowing they need corrections?
I will, as long as we get our corrections, I mean, I think it's not that much, she can make up the difference then, wonderful. Next time they correct.
Okay.
Now, unless nobody else wants to collect their, I'm going to make a motion that we pass the claims for, approve the claims from 5439 to 5459 for $151,971.53.
And that is with the.
Corrections.
Stipulation that we see corrected claims on all the Amazon claims at the next board meeting?
Yes, whatever was messed up on this.
And then I guess your $39 one has to be included in the next claim docket? Because it's not added into any of these claims. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we paid tonight's claims, and that we also get to see adjusted or corrected Amazon claims at our next board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
But I do have something to say. This board is not all the same accord. All this nitpicking is absolutely ridiculous to me.
So noted. I don't like approving something that I know is incorrect. That's all.
I know, every time we come to a meeting, it's always a hassle about something.
Well.
And I think we've got more important things to think about.
I just don't want my name on something that I know is incorrect. You're out of order too. Clerk's report.
Okay, first on the list, the CCMG paperwork was turned in, and it's going to be closed as soon as possible. as soon as possible, which was a paperwork that was supposed to be closed in 2023.
That's for next year?
No, this is for the claims that didn't get closed in 2023.
Okay.
The grant.
All right.
Okay, next on my list, I have created an information sheet so that when you come and you request any information from the clerk's office, you are to ask for that sheet, and you are to turn it in, and it will be given to you at an approximate time that I desire to give to you. Also, I would like to make sure that in this year's budget, that I ask for a lawyer for on, to be for me, because I need, I believe it's a desperate thing for me, to protect myself in the clerk's office, so I need to make sure that it is in the budget for next year. Did you, I, I told you before the budget was passed, so-
Did you tell Baker Tilly?
No, I told you.
We did the budget for you.
I told you, and you knew that it was, I asked for that, and it's Yao's job to make sure I have a lawyer in the budget.
What do you have under professional services in general, we'll split it.
No. Then also, I would like to say that to any, any person that's out there on a trial basis, if someone would like to be placed on a budget, if you have been here or a resident for over a year, and you would like to go through the budget process, which means 12 months, I'll go through, I'll add up, make an average of what you would pay on an average every month, so that your bill remains the same throughout the year. If there's anybody that would like that, I would be more than happy to sit down with you to make sure that your bill is at an average and you can maintain it throughout the year.
When we talked about it, did you tell me it required an ordinance?
Maleka, can you say that again for the, the budget, or the, the budgeting of utilities, right?
It's not, it's the budgeting of their account. I take a 12-month, just like NIPSco or anyone else. What they do is they take the average of 12 months of what a person paid during that 12 months. They divide it by 12 months, and it comes up with the average of what they would pay every month. To me, the same, like if it was $200, they would pay $200 throughout the whole month, throughout the year.
Are these just for homeowners?
This is-
Or people living in our town and they-
This is for a resident, whoever is a resident in the town of Kingsford Heights that has been here for over a year.
So would that be electric and water?
It would be all of it. If they had a bill, like there are some people that have bigger bills in the wintertime or in the summertime. You take an average of every one of their bills, you divide it by 12, it'll tell you how much they would pay every month, so that they wouldn't get that big bill in the summertime.
So what happens if they're over, like, say, you say it's $200, right? And say, one of it, like by the end of year, they owe a balance, like, how are you going to offset that? Like, the difference, like-
We would, we would sit down and discuss it, but most of the time that you're not going to go over that, because if it's a, a budget, like I have a budget with NIPSco.
Yeah, absolutely.
Majority of the times that I have a budget with NIPSco, I normally get a credit at the end of the year.
I get that, but what I would need to research, just for you guys, just to, I've never had a municipality that I've represented do a budget. It's usually the bill as it becomes due, so that you know what's late and what isn't.
Well, see, what happens is I have a lot of people that have big bills in the summertime, and they can't afford $400 or $500 a walk. So if you average it out, they wouldn't get the $400 or $500 in that summertime.
I get it, I just-
So what happens if they don't pay their bill? Do they forfeit their budget and have to catch the entire payment?
That's just like if they make a payment plan with me. If they do not pay, make that payment plan, they forfeit the plan.
What, what, my question would be, what, what would happen if the person was on that budget and just automatically just moved out of town?
Or died.
Or would, then we'd be stuck with the money that, they would be paying so much onto their budget, but are you going on the high end of the budget, you say?
It's going to be on a high end, but if somebody leaves, the budget would be ended anyway. That's just like if you play NIPSco. If I cut off NIPSco-
You might actually end up making money that way.
Yes. Because if they paid $200 and their bill was only $150, then they got $50 credit onto their next bill.
But it could work the other way.
It could, but very rarely does it.
I want you to do like an average from the low end, the middle, and the high end, just so you can see what's the chances that the town will have to heat it up. You know what I'm saying, to, to get a better understanding, since a lot of people aren't new to this. So just to do an average?
Well, the main thing is, is when you look and see how people have done their bills in the past, it's kind of hard to not get the money soon because of the fact that they, they leave or short. But, you know, if something broke down to where you can actually show what you're doing in three different, or the lower, middle, whatever, it's something that you could look at, but I don't, it's kind of different, I don't know.
Maybe it shouldn't be a year, maybe we should do, maybe people who've been here for five years, maybe people who are a little more-
That's why I asked you about homeowners.
Baker Tilly work with you on this at all?
No.
No? Because I just want to make sure the right body is passing it. I just don't know who has the statutory authority to do it. That's what I'd have to just research.
Okay.
Or is it something that maybe we could, like, do a workshop for the residents about their budget? You know what I'm saying?
I think the thing to do right now, like she was talking, is look into, sign, sign out exactly what we can do.
Who has the statutory to announce a plan?
Anything's possible. I mean, instead of passing something like that, so, I mean, because the goal is that you want people to pay their bills, right? And you don't want them to be overwhelmed with these big bills. So that's the goal. So like, we're trying to work with the community to say, what can I do for you so we can, you know, you pay your bills and that you won't, you know, flip out when you have a big one. So either that means a budget workshop, or, like I said, do a low, middle, high, so we all have an understanding of it, because, but I do feel like one year is not enough. I think a resident has to be more than one year. I mean, just for on the trust factor, that people move in and out.
I don't know if that actually affects-
Maybe homeowners.
Or homeowners.
Yes, homeowners, yeah. Try that first, yeah.
Because that, that way you could guarantee if they're going to move, you get your money anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, yeah, homeowners.
Not renters.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Ordinance says, we have two copies of a smoking ordinance or non-smoking ordinance on park property that we have put aside and put aside. One of them is for designating certain areas as smoking areas, and one of them is for having no smoking in area at all. Of course, I only got a copy of one of them in front of me. One of them we had last meeting, and now I have the other one here tonight. We haven't done any official, well, a long time ago, we did an official reading on the first version, and then the whole thing got tabled. I don't know the date. Do we have, does anybody on the council have a preference of what to do with this ordinance? And I have my mistake altogether. Oh, I do, I have both of them.
Come on, talk to us, that's what you want, we're, we're listening to you, I like to sit face first.
So, I know we keep going back and forth. Ultimately, the park needs to get ADA compliant, so a lot of the parking area needs to be parking spaces with pavement. A lot of the playground area needs to be revamped. I mean, we are hoping to get some grant funding. So I'm afraid if you designate this as a smoking area, that may not even be an area for smoking later. Ford Park, we'd like to, I mean, if, if money were no option, and we had all the money, grant funding that we could get, we'd like a splash pad, a basketball court, a soccer field, and, and that's going to be on one side of the, of the park. Then some of the parking is going to have to be inside the park. So there's a lot of things that would be moving. You could decide this is designated smoking, but then you'd have to yank the sign. But nowhere that I've ever been in any game, any kind of outdoor youth activity, are there smokers. It's just no smoking. And so if you smoke, you go to the area that's not on the property. Can't smoke in school property, can't smoke in your car, can't smoke, can't smoke. Like, most people are used to not smoking. And I know somebody came and was complaining about not smoking because they wanted to watch their kid play ball and smoke. But tough cookies, you guys got to get to where you're just like, sorry, it's not the end of the world if you don't smoke. We as adults have lots of places we go to where we don't smoke. And youth sports should be one of them. So I'm asking you-
Does Kekke Valley have anything in their rules?
They want us to have, all the other ball clubs that they go to, all the other fields, there's no smoking. So they asked if we would put a sign up, but we've gone him home and back and forth. But at every KVA ball dive-in, there's no smoking, period. So please, just, just make the, make the call. It's not, you're actually not going to hurt anybody by saying no smoking. You could hurt people by allowing smoking.
Well, that's my preference, too. I mean, I don't smoke, so I don't really want any smoking around the east or-
Where are my kids? No.
Lately, the issue has not even been smoking cigarettes, it's been smoking those-
Vapes?
Vapes, and-
And this has that in there?
Yes, and, and, yeah, so that applies to that, and I, I don't see a place for any of it, not at, not at kids' sport. You can, if we're talking about the issue that happened over here, you can literally just walk across the street to the public sidewalk, and you can still see the field from there. So the fact that we're having, like, people are giving you guys overtime about not smoking in the park, if it's what we're seeing is better for the community, I'd say just-
Okay.
No smoking.
My only question, or drawback, I, I have no problem with no smoking during kids' sports, none whatsoever. But if we ever get back to where we have the Adult Labor Day tournament, as, that used to be a big fundraiser for Little League.
Okay, that's fair.
What's, I mean, those men-
You can make an exception, like, that's a pretty particular event, and I'd say that-
Then you can designate an area.
You might want to, you can make a designated area for certain events, or because that is so particular, that might be something you can word into the ordinance. Like, no smoking, but, like, we want to make it no smoking overall, but if someone were to come around the field like that for that purpose of having a built softball game, you might want to see what, like, another town that does those things frequently does. I know Knox does that, those kind of tournaments all the time, like, always ask over there.
Well, people will see, they will dip and dive, and they will smoke, you know, but you're, you're trying to deter it.
Right.
And you have to be careful to say it's fine to smoke, because when we had the, the adults in the, the field smoking, they were smoking in the dugout. Then no one cleaned up their butts. I mean, it was a hot mess. You really don't want smoking, even with adults. I mean, they may go to their car and, and grab a smoke, they may smoke, but you're, the whole point of the signage is to deter smoking.
Yeah, then they won't be leaving, like, the, the remnants of it. If it says no smoking, they're going to make it a point to not show that that's going on.
Even if you took away the $100 fine, but the idea is that by law, there's no smoking. There's no smoking on county property, but sometimes people smoke. I mean, it just happens, but the sign says no smoking. That's what we're asking.
Then it, then it eliminates some confusion, and people coming here, coming after you guys for not having a set ordinance or rule for that. It's really your preference. I know in Michigan City, they don't allow smoking during youth sports.
During youth sports?
Correct.
But at all the parks, like Petrie Park, like, all of those parks are no smoking.
Yes.
Is it enforcement against adults?
It's, we have so many parks, I guarantee you, there's someone smoking on it.
It's no different than what she said, I mean, at least it's there.
Well, no, because I just said that because your statement, you said during youth, so I was like, is there an exception for adults?
And I think maybe not even having an exception is okay.
But I know definitely during youth. These deals are definitely mainly used for youth. I mean, if that comes back, then, you know, on our end, maybe we just, you know, it's not really a huge deal if, you know, we have a, a, a charity event going on for adults, but mainly those are kids' games, and you don't want people getting rowdy like they did before. I mean, that's just not good at, at all for kids.
Which one is it?
I really liked the way it was, it was well-worded. It was saying that it was for the safety of the community, it was for the cleanliness of the parks. All of that is very important. And to put it in a designated area doesn't stop the help.
What do you think, Lori?
So I'm going to make a motion that we do the ordinance prohibiting smoking and use of electronic smoking devices on town-owned property, park property.
The short title.
The short, yes. The not the designated area one.
So then that would be your approval of it on second reading?
Yes.
Or you would want it to go to second reading?
Do you have the date we did the first reading?
No, I don't, not only.
Does that ordinance include any sort of chewing tobacco? Anything that does include that? Okay, all right.
Did we have our first reading on that?
We did, but we, I don't even know if we-
You did.
I don't even know if we passed it.
Did we have our first reading and we revised it? Is that what that was, then we went through the vapes, too?
We tabled it.
You know, actually, it doesn't have chew on here.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It has lighted cigars, cigarettes, weed, plant, electronic smoking devices, but it does not have chew. Okay.
If I may, the one concern I would have with that is, is that if you put a sign up there, and we have an officer that drives by and doesn't enforce it, then I think that that paints a very bad image of our town's law enforcement, as well as the town.
Right. You would have to enforce it.
We would have to enforce it. So I guess my concern with this would be, is that in this ordinance, we are on the same page with what the enforcement would look like and how it's going to be carried out, so it's very clearly out on, kind of on the front end instead of after the fact.
Anyone in violation of this ordinance shall be fined in the amount of $100.
So we just give them a ticket and say, no smoking, sorry?
As long as we have the signs up. We do have to have the signs up.
Yeah.
I'll second Joe's motion.
So are we on?
What, what, what do you say, Lori's motion?
I made the motion, not Joe.
Lori made the motion to accept ordinance number 20, 25007, prohibiting smoking and use of electronic, on the short title.
The short one.
On its first reading? Is this its first reading? I don't know what we did before.
I'm trying to find it.
There's something to say, we can't start over and call it the first one.
You could.
All right. We can, on its first reading-
If you give me one second, let me see if I can find it.
I don't think we went anywhere with it, because it was-
Yeah, I think we stopped, because we've had people here complaining about it.
We got two different decisions.
We got two different decisions.
I see. Was that your June twenty-third meeting? You know what, just start all over because it looks like we referred it back.
The first reading.
Yep, start all over for first reading.
Okay, so I, I'm going to make a motion that we accept ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash zero zero seven. Prohibiting smoking and use of electronic smoking devices on town-owned park property, the first reading.
Laurie motion, Dwayne seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Second reading and third reading at the next meeting.
If it was unanimous, you could do them all in one meeting.
You can get your signs designed though and stuff.
Crystal, you guys getting a pool of bases?
You know what, I'll get in touch with them, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll get in touch with them.
That weather's going to tear up.
It is getting bad, yeah.
Okay, we have no resolutions, correct? Okay, Keystone, Cloud, oh, Keystone Base Cloud. Can I have that claim docket back a second? Now, in this claim docket, the Keystone bills were just for the regular base, regular contracts?
Yes.
All right, so how much more is the cloud?
Cloud is twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
More?
No.
Oh, fine.
The whole thing is twenty-five thousand dollars.
And we get credit for all that claim that's in there?
You get credit for when it goes live.
All right, so.
So it won't go live until June, so you would get credit for six thousand dollars.
Because this was thirteen thousand too?
Yep.
Okay, I don't know anything about the cloud at all. Amber, at the meeting, recommended that it was a good idea. I have had other people say it's a good idea. I have not checked what other towns are doing, but I do believe they are doing that. I know it's a lot more secure.
Well, we're getting cyber, we're getting hit. We had a young lady, that her check was snatched through email, cyber. Then this morning, as I was going through getting a CCNG grant closed out, and I was talking to a young lady at Milestone, she was sending me the information to close out the grant, and somebody hacked into her email and told us that we needed to pay the five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars by wire transfer today. I called her, she asked me did I know what her name was. I told her, yes, it was Jen, and she said, I did not send that. She said, you have been hacked. So this is happening every day, and I do know with Anna's check, it also hit Long Beach and a couple other places that were hacked at the same time.
Now, that cost would be split between three utilities? Not, well, garbage, you mean?
For us.
We don't bill anything civil town on the utility bills. Oh, okay, but we have utility programs.
Council, council, council.
Okay, right, so it'd be about sixty, six thousand, sixty-two fifty per department.
Now, you do understand that when we get this cloud base, there's initial payment of going cloud base. The initial cost of going cloud base is forty-eight thousand dollars. It is twenty-five thousand dollars per year, then in order for them to go live, it's additional twenty-two thousand dollars. But they give you seven days to do that. If we get that information done before the seven days, each day that they give you, like, it's a, let's say, we have to put the data in, they give us three days to put the data in. If we get it done in one day, that condenses the bill down. We get the other data, that's two days, and we get it done in one day, that condenses the bill down. So that twenty-two thousand dollars could possibly be null and void.
By any chance, did you inform Baker Tilly of those possible costs when they were doing the budget?
No, I did not. I did not tell Baker, because to be perfectly honest, once you go cloud base, Baker Tilly, unless you're doing budget, would be null and void. Everything is done on the computer. When they do an audit, everything is done on the computer. They go onto your computer base, they do all of that. All the paperwork that we do is null and void. All the backing up, the, like, we had to go through IT last week. We had to go to FM Technology for two hours one day, for another two hours the other day, because our computers were not synced. So we had to go and have them. We called Voice, we called Phantom, we called Voice, we called Phantom. This happened all day long because our computers were not synced. Cloud base, we don't have to worry about that. We don't have to have IT department, we don't have to have a server, we don't have to have any of that.
But she's talking another twenty years, she's talking forty-eight thousand dollars altogether, wouldn't you?
It's forty-eight thousand.
That still have to be divided, that would be.
Twelve apiece.
Twelve apiece.
And I don't, you know, it needed to have, we needed to have known this before budget was done. That's a lot of money to come up with. I mean, I guess we have CCIF, but.
Does a budget, I want to come back to utilities, I mean, where, where was that, where's that factor in then?
Well, we have to look at the balances of all the utilities and set aside twelve grand out of each one and see if, do they have it? Do you think the utilities have twelve grand to spare?
I do, but the only thing I can say is that right now with the way they're hacking, non-stop.
No, I understand that, but.
We can't afford not to go cloud base.
I understand that.
Well, electric and water, not electric and water, but water and sewage.
I'm sure they're fine.
They, they have the money.
And electric's coming out of the negative, or coming up less negative.
We have no other way to get money if we couldn't take it out of the electric.
Now, electric's got to pay their share of it. That's a huge dollar.
And so they'll just have to be in the hole, until they get out of the hole.
With your pleasure.
I think we ought to go for it. Because we'll save money in the long run.
Well, the safety part of it too.
It's the security, I don't care about that, it's the security.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, they'll take your money just trying to buy something over there.
We're going to computers, and more and more computers, and more phones, and we need more security, that's why I'm about security.
I think it's a great idea, because Michigan City just got hit really bad, and that affected all of our abilities to be on our own functioning parts of being a part of nine-one-one, so Michigan City's still not up and running.
Evelyn, did you make a motion?
We are up and running.
Oh.
We don't, please don't say that, we're not, we are up and running.
Okay, they got it up.
We are up and running, but if they're, because you have a significant.
It's touchy, yeah.
You made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second what you.
All right, Evelyn's motion, Dwayne seconded it, to go cloud base, now that it's still, it's through Keystone or Voice or whatever.
Yes, do we have to use them, or can we look into other places to get the cloud base from?
It's their computer program.
Okay, I'm just asking.
And the gentleman, Parker Bright, also would like to come and give you guys administration.
Okay.
He just needed to know we were really interested in going for cloud base.
All right. I do not see Jeannie Reed here.
Wait, did you guys vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Aye.
Evelyn, Dwayne.
She, she made the motion, he said.
So I had, I thought Dwayne made it, Evelyn seconded.
No, no.
Oh, we reversed it, okay.
Have you got one question? Go ahead, please.
Oh, well, you guys were talking about Jeannie Reed with the landlord, because that's what she was supposed to be here for.
Right.
And I know that the lawyers sent the information about landlords not having to pay the deposit. Well, I have a question with that. When our landlords don't have to pay the deposit, when a tenant leaves, the landlords ask for the utilities to be placed back into their name. If they don't have an account, how can we place it back into their name?
You'd have to set up an account with them again, if they want it back in their name, right?
But how do we do that if they don't make a, a deposit?
They would have to if they want it back in their name.
But see, that's, that's what the problem is. Jeannie Reed is wanting to get her money back for the deposit for these houses. She wants, she's also asked about you, you were in office in two thousand four.
She's a landlord?
She's a landlord, and she says she made a deposit on a house. I don't know how much she paid, it was in two thousand four. She made one just recently on another house. So she's wanting her money back for these houses, but if she, if the tenant leaves her house, and they ask for the depo, the, um, utilities to be placed back in their name, how do we do that if they don't have to make a deposit?
They have to come out here and make one.
They have to come out and make one and put it in their name.
What happened to the hundred dollar one, where the homeowner paid a hundred bucks?
So, I don't know, so, so Jeannie is a landlord, right? She made a deposit, right? She gets someone to rent in it, right? She wants to get out of it, she wants her money back. So at that time, is the renter making a deposit?
The renter makes a deposit, but what happens is, according to the law, is saying that the landlord does not have to make a deposit on their property. The tenant makes the deposit. So once the tenant leaves the house, the landlords call and say, put the house back, the utilities back in my name.
She got it, correct.
She got to put a deposit, just like she took that deposit the first time, when a renter comes in, and then when the renter leaves, and she want back on it, she got to put a deposit back.
It's her choice if she wants to leave a deposit on five.
Huh, but.
It's her choice if she wants to leave a deposit on five. Otherwise, if the tenant moves out, and she wants the utilities on, then she's got to come out and put a deposit down.
But she's won money back from two thousand four.
She's this.
No, you don't need to change a lot. Because then the tenant's already vacated the property.
The owner wants to. She, she had to put the deposit down on the last house.
Because there's one deposit.
I mean, she's put two, but, according to what she said, she gave a deposit for a house when you were in office.
Right.
It's not the same house, it's a different house. She had a different house, she made another deposit down.
When?
It was like a month ago.
Why didn't she already say, I already have a landlord deposit?
But for two different houses, don't she got to have?
No, not say if you're a landlord, you need a landlord deposit, because you're not going to have all the houses in your name at one time.
But are they transferring utilities or terminating?
Just like I gave the example, so, okay, if she wants any kind of utilities.
I want my service stopped.
So she's got ten houses, so you're just saying she's got to put a deposit in one, so who's going to turn it on? She's got to wait till her renter get there to turn it on?
Yep.
For those other nine houses?
No.
No, each house is different.
Each house would probably already be rented.
But what I'm saying.
Oh, you mean at the very beginning?
At the very beginning, so if she has ten houses, and she's only got to put a deposit in one house, who is putting a deposit for the rest?
Every house would be different.
Well, that's, she said landlords only have to deposit once.
She had a landlord deposit, in all probability.
Okay, I didn't know there was such thing as a, okay.
She had a landlord deposit, she got a house, well, wait, she got a house, she fixed it up, she put a tenant in it. So she had, the tenant had a deposit for the service. She got another house, so she had the landlord deposit, the tenant's already on this house, so her deposit moved to this house. She didn't have.
I get, no, no, I get what she's saying. It's the same money, she just moving it to the deriva.
Okay, this is where the problem lies. You guys are discussing about she, it moves, moves, moves.
I don't like the movement.
But if I'm not, you were in the office, not me.
Right.
So how do I know that she put a deposit down on the house in two thousand four?
If you looked at the old manual deposit record, which was alphabetical, or the old Keystone records, which were alphabetical, it would have said Reed, comma, Jeannie, one hundred dollars. And if it, and then it would never have been crossed off refunded.
But going forward, though, you're treating each resident as a separate, I mean, each house as separate, right? So it's not flowing that it's going to pass on to in perpetuity, right? Like, it doesn't make sense. I think it's, you stay with one address. If it needs to be refunded, okay, but we're not just transferring.
Well, see, that's why I'm trying to get an understanding. I have no understanding at all, because she comes up there, and she tells me that she had a house over on, um, Knox. She had a house on Nordway. So now you're telling me that this house, this deposit floats from Nordway to Knox, to, um, Blue Moon, all of these different places, and I don't know what she's supposed to be doing. That's my point.
One deposit is the deposit.
It goes back to the hundred dollar rent, or the, the hundred dollar deposit for the homeowner that rented the house.
Well, there's.
And that, that money always stays there, they, they don't get that money back anyway until they ask you to rent the house. Yeah.
I don't like this whole idea of it floating, because it's a, it's a, it's a nightmare to keep track of.
The only way we, way back when, and I mean, we kept, I mean, it was not.
Oh, yeah, sure.
The only way a landlord had to put down a deposit on multiple houses was if the landlord got behind in the bills. Otherwise, we, the landlord, had a deposit, period.
Is that a ordinance?
No, it was, it was a deposit. Deposits aren't in our ordinance anyway. The, the, I, the deposit is supposed to be an estimated two and a half months utility bill. It has not been changed since I was in office, so I know that our deposit is not near enough. But that's neither here nor there.
No, I was just trying to see how we came with a landlord deposit versus a resident deposit, like, where is that?
Because they're not living there, they're not consuming.
I, no, I understand that, I'm just saying, where is the documentation that says Kingsford Heights has a landlord deposit?
It was, it was a policy, it was probably an unwritten policy, I inherited that policy.
So if it's an unwritten policy, then a policy probably needs to be created.
Bring the next ordinance.
Well, I think the easiest is keep each property address as a specific, like, you just can't even allow, like, just transfer a thing.
But see, now we have the issue with Jeannie Reed coming in, with the law stating that she can't, she doesn't have to pay a deposit. But if that's the law, I don't have a problem with the law, but when they come in and say they want the utilities put in their name, how do we put the utilities in their name when they don't have an account?
Well, then we're not going, we're going to utilities.
Well, I.
Okay, so let's just say I own the property, right, I'm, I'm a landlord.
Right.
A tenant comes in for three months, tenant comes in, I close it out, put it in my tenant's name, right? Tenant, tenant pays, those are three months. Then, assuming I want to keep the electric on so my pipes don't freeze, I put the account back in my name and re-give you a deposit.
But she's saying that law says she don't have to.
Yes, that's. Yes, that's...
But that's if a tenant's in there.
This is what the person is coming up with.
So maybe that's what if the law...
That's if a tenant's in there.
What's the statute that she is referring to? And that's maybe needs to be read, so you can understand that.
It's whose name, if that's, how do you know that the tenant's in there? That's not your responsibility.
Jeannie Reed owns a couple of properties, and she came in with the code, and you had sent the information. So she's referring to that, that she does not have to pay a deposit.
If she wants to turn it on without a tenant, then that's a whole different policy. Makes sense? Okay.
I don't know. See, the thing about it is that, because you guys haven't dealt with Jeannie Reed. It's a different story.
I think everybody's dealt with it.
So it's not, it's not as easy as me and you were talking, it's not that easy.
Do you have it clear, like, that part of it? I guess, I guess I would like, if, when she comes in there, I would say, yes, this is true, but if there's a tenant thing that, you know what I'm saying? It's, she can read it clear.
Well, see, that's why I'm saying it. But like I just told you, she wants her money back from two thousand four. She wants her money back from earlier this year.
Well, you should be able to go into the computer and look up those two houses, and then go to the deposit part of their account, and you should be able to find that hundred dollars.
Does she have a new tenant for those two houses?
She has a new tenant in the last house. I don't know about the one on Norway, because I was not here and I have not looked up her information.
Okay.
Because it's a possibility that it may not be there on Keystone. So, it's one of, I know that she put a deposit down on Knox. And she wants that money back.
Is that house occupied?
Yes, they just got a tenant.
Okay, then she would get that money back.
Let's give her that money back, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You got, you got the deposit from the tenant.
Then I got another one for you.
But you got the deposit from the tenant.
I got the deposit from the tenant.
So you got two deposits on them, so you can refund the tenant, right?
I can refund the Knox. I don't know about Norway. But also, we have the forty-one dollars that you say fees is not refundable.
Fees are not refundable.
And so she wants that in writing.
So she paid more than a hundred?
All right, there, there was... She paid two ninety-one, because I wasn't aware of the unknown policy of the hundred dollars.
All right, there is a document where the I U R C approved non-recurring charges. We are not under the I U R C's jurisdiction anymore. You are gonna have to go hunt in old files to find that document. That's all I can tell you. It had other things on it, like water tap fees and sewer, not sewer, because they didn't do sewer. Water tap fees, reconnect fees, bad check fees, there was a whole list of non-recurring charges.
Yeah, we got that I U R C, uh...
A few years ago.
So are we saying that we're gonna give a refund for an unwritten policy?
Well, if we have a hundred dollar deposit on file, and she can find it in the computer, under the person's account on one of those two addresses, then I'm sure it's there, because we used to balance the register every single month. I don't know when's the last time it's been balanced. But we used to do it every single month to the penny. And, um, it, I know it was there when I left office. So it should still be in the computer. And then you give her the money back, and you take it out of the computer.
My whole issue is on the unwritten policy.
I'm just guessing it was unwritten. I don't know for a fact it was, I said I inherited it.
Does she have a receipt?
Well, see, she had a receipt. See, that's another thing. I asked her for a receipt. She has a receipt for the Knox. She does not have a receipt for two thousand four.
That could be a problem.
If we don't have a receipt, we're gonna help.
Check her two accounts or three accounts in the computer on the deposit tab for that account.
I have my receipts.
That, I don't have mine.
I do.
But I know I paid them, and, all right.
I have my dollars.
So maybe we should make a new policy stating them, to make it legal.
I don't think you need a policy. I, I don't think you need a policy, because the law said if a tenant's in there, they want their services. You need the deposit from them.
But you just, see, I collected two ninety-one. That's what the deposit is.
No. The deposit is two fifty, and the forty-one is a hookup transfer fee.
Okay, and it's two ninety-one in total. So I collected the two ninety-one from her. But you just said, "A unwritten policy of a hundred dollars for landlords."
I know, I did.
Which I don't know anything about, an unwritten policy for a hundred dollars.
But when, when a tenant moves out, how much do you subtract off their final bill as a deposit applied?
Whatever is left on their bill, the two fifty, that covers that.
Two fifty, okay.
Two fifty. The forty-one dollars is non-refundable.
Correct, okay.
But a landlord's deposit is only a hundred. So if said person moves out from Knox Road... I'm, I'm trying to make it make sense.
If it doesn't, because I haven't been charging a landlord price.
There's one deposit. There should be one deposit.
Yeah, that, that's why I'm saying, we're getting two different things.
But if she moves out of Knox Road, and Jeannie wants to do some remodeling, Jeannie wants the utility, she would pay a hundred dollars to keep that in, get that in the name. And then, when she rents it out again, she would get her said hundred dollars back.
But they're saying they don't want, they don't want there to be two deposits anymore, they want there to be one deposit.
So she just has to pay a whole new deposit to get her money back, what are the next...
Correct.
Then she'd have to worry about...
Yeah, put that on your owner.
Then, then she would have...
Why would you have to worry about her money? Like, she get a refund when she get tenants, she get a refund back. When her tenant's out, she puts the deposit back. That's on her. Why would you have to make it on her?
If Jeannie doesn't get there in time to make sure that her pipes don't freeze, that's not our problem.
It's up to the owner to come into you and say, "I'm cancelling service."
They usually, like, they're transfer. There's different owners that call and say, "I want my property put back into my name." Because they have an account, a deposit down, it automatically is put back into their name so that we can charge them. If said owner took money back, they don't have an account.
Got it.
But she's just gonna leave it there. She's just gonna have to leave it there.
All right.
Yeah, but there's some...
Check and see what she's, you can find on those other two accounts in the computer.
Okay.
All right. You know how to find deposits.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what you got, am I collecting the two ninety-one? Or am I collecting the hundred dollars? What, this is, this, because she's coming back!
Forty-one dollars is nothing, she don't get it back.
What'd she do there?
The deposit should be set in the ordinance.
So, I don't know if it is.
Yes, there is.
No, the deposit was on the I U R C non-recurring charges that just carried forward even when we got out of the I U R C.
So has she had any other...
I'm sure it was in the ordinances.
Or two hundred. So if you've been in office, have you, um, charged a landlord?
Yep, every one of them.
Two fifty.
Two fifty plus two ninety-one. Every one of them have been charged that.
And she's the only one that said...
And she's the only one that comes up and argues about her fees. The rest of them pay it, and when they call and say, "Put it back in my name", they have not questioned me about their deposit, nothing.
So that deposit just stays there?
It just stays there.
So why is she...
Because her name is Jeannie Reed.
All right.
I don't know, so I can't.
Well, then she has to come in and reestablish it and come.
All right.
If we get back to the...
All right.
So then, just tell her that that two ninety-one has to stay there, so that when it goes back into her name...
We gotta move on, just do the two fifty if that's what you think you're doing.
Okay.
All right.
I wanna go back to...
Randy, we're gonna go on to another issue, under new business. What one do you want?
It was old business.
Okay, we'll come back.
What I want to do, are you, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. What I wanna know is, what's happening with Baker Tilly with our contract coming up? Because I wasn't here the last time that, that contract got extended. But that, that contract was extended six months.
It expires December thirty-first.
So we got, we got five weeks or so to decide if we're gonna renew this contract with these guys?
Yep.
And I wanted to bring that up, because if we're gonna, we, we have, if we have to make a decision what we're gonna do.
If you go to the cloud, do you still need Baker Tilly? Because you were saying something about that might be...
Only time that we would need Baker Tilly is during budget time. And that's normally, and we don't necessarily have to have Baker Tilly. We could go with someone that's cheaper, which I did find out that there is a young lady that's cheaper that does it. And she's very, a lot of people really love her. But far as Baker Tilly, we don't have to, and you don't have to go for the twenty-five hundred dollar a month. You can take it down lower. If you have questions, they don't...
What do we, what do we...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we renewed that contract, you weren't here, you were, you were, you were. Did we not say that was gonna be the last time we renewed it?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
So that's the end of Baker Tilly at the end of the year, then?
Yep.
Yes.
So if we need any kind of financial help, we can just go outside the...
If we do, but, but I thought you were gonna be fully trained by then and able to do it.
Well, I probably would have if we would've had the workshops and all of the stuff that you guys required at Baker Tilly. That's why if you look on there, Baker Tilly charged us six thousand dollars, and that's because that you guys utilized Baker Tilly's services.
That's, that's okay.
That's okay, we asked them to come and do the budget with us. How are you doing on balancing the bank's statements and being able to do the reports and all that on your own?
I do quite well, but I do call and ask questions on what I need to, if there's a questioning that I have. But like I said, you've ran out of hours, so now they're charging us full price.
All right, but that's, that's only gonna be for November and December, and then they won't be here anymore, and you'll be able to do it. Okay.
So there's nothing that we need to worry about that? She can just let it go, or we can, she can let them know at the end of the year that that's the end of Baker Tilly with us then? We will no longer need their services.
Are they working on any projects right now? Or is everything reconciled?
Right now, the only thing that's left is like the end of the year, that's it.
Okay. Um, new business. I've got a little bit of new business, no, I've got a lot of new business. We have got some communication problems between the office and the field employees. And we've had two, one quite upsetting situation, and one medium upsetting situation. And I'm gonna start with the utilities. We have a customer who paid her utility bill, I mean, she was disconnected. She paid her utility bill. Um, I believe it was an online payment. She called and confirmed that the office got her payment. She was told she'd be turned back on. I believe that was Wednesday. She called the office back Thursday, did not get an answer. Called the office back Friday morning and did not get an answer. Got ahold of me on an email type situation. Got ahold of Randy. Randy got ahold of Laura. Found out, yes, the girl did pay her bill. So she waited an extra forty-eight hours almost to get her utilities turned back on. That is fairly unacceptable. It's more than fairly unacceptable. I, was there children involved?
There was kids in the area, yes.
Okay, that, that's, that's totally horrible. I would like to know how that happened, and I would like to see her get refunded her reconnection fee. There's no reason she had to wait forty-eight hours to get utilities back on. The other situation with a lack of communication, um, we had a resident pay for a second sign about legally blind being in the area. The agreement was when she paid for her sign, the sign would get put up. The guys never got the message that she paid for the sign, and it was fifteen days later. Or thereabouts. Again, that's a lack of communication. I, I don't know, we need, we need better communications. And, and I mean, if that had been this, if we had had this weather last week on Wednesday, that poor girl would've been in really bad shape. I mean, I, I don't...
Waited to bring that to the meeting, rather than putting it on Facebook that something had happened?
Oh, no, that was a personal comment about me being hung up on. That, I did not put, I did not put any of the town problems on Facebook. That was a personal problem I put on Facebook.
As the town president.
On the town page.
That is a private town page.
That's Roger Reese's page.
That is not a town page.
But she clarified herself as the town president in your statement.
I think I said me, in parentheses. I did not say town council president. Anyway...
Well, it was all over Facebook.
I, I'm sure it was. And I'm sure it got copied and put other places.
I just don't think that...
That's okay, that's okay. I'm saying right now about the communication problem between the town hall and the utility guys. And what are we gonna do for that girl who had to wait forty-eight hours to get her utilities back on? Do we at least refund her her reconnection fee?
Who, who was the young lady?
Amber Deets. I believe is her name.
Why was she not, why wasn't it not to them to turn it back on?
Amber Deets called and said that she was going to pay her bill online. I told Amber Deets she would not get her utilities cut on until we verified that she paid her bill. We don't get verified until the very next day that she got her bill, that she paid that amount of money. Now, if you just really wanna go even deeper, Amber Deets did not pay. She was on a payment arrangement that she did not keep. And I was helping Amber, because she had kids. Now, why hers didn't get cut on at that time, I do not know the next day. I had left before I had to go to the bank. So, that's the reason why, I don't know that she didn't call into the office. But the reason why she hasn't been answered in the office is because we have been getting Medicare calls and burial service calls twenty to forty times a day. Every time we answer the phone, it's saying, "Hello, do you have burial insurance? Click." "Hello, do you have burial insurance? Click." "Hello, do you have Medicare?" So anytime that somebody is trying to call while we are talking to the burial insurance, we hear a dee, 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 but we can't click over, because we only have one line. So there's a possibility that we never got her call, because we listen to burial and Medicare insurance calls all day long.
You just shout about it.
No, I didn't, I'm talking just like I'm talking to you.
Okay. Anyway...
That phone still has to be answered, doesn't it?
I, I'm answering the phone.
Why wasn't there an A V O written to the guys to go turn her back on?
We called the guys for a day V O, but we didn't get her call until the next day, because we are answering calls from Medicare every day.
Randy?
I received a phone call from Amber Friday afternoon, well after the office was closed. So I reached out to Laura, and Laura goes, "Yes, you did pay." And nobody notified me, nobody notified any of the guys to be turned back on.
We didn't get her call in the office. I answered Amber when she said, the first day, when she paid, she said her utilities were cut off. And I told her her utilities were cut off. The next, I told her her utilities wouldn't be cut back on until we received payment. And that next day, she had received payment, but I was not in the office.
So you didn't...
I did not, uh, call Randy. I didn't call Randy on that.
Did anybody check the next day to see if her payment had come in?
Nipco's not gonna do that.
Somebody...
If I get cut off in Nipco, they're not gonna check.
You're out of order again. Somebody, somebody confirmed that the payment was received on Wednesday. All right, so I just am wanting to know what happened from Wednesday to Friday, and then it was even after hours on Friday. That's a lot of time. If somebody confirmed to her that her payment was here on Wednesday, how did the reconnect get overlooked?
If you, you just really wanna know. You really wanna know. Amber Deets has not been called up on her bill in numerous months. Wait, wait, wait a minute. You asked a question. I was doing Amber a favor because Amber is over $1,000, and she did a payment arrangement, and she messed up her payment arrangement.
Okay.
So she still owes money to the town. She still should be cut off right now.
Did she pay what you told her to pay?
She paid, I think $300 is what she paid.
Is that what you told her to pay?
I believe it is.
Well, then, I rest my case. She did what you told her.
Okay. All right, if, if that's what y'all choose to do, the $35, that's what y'all choose to do. But when she ups and leaves in the very couple of months, you're gonna be on the hook for her bill of $1,000.
That is why we're hesitant with you on the budget plans.
Well, as far as her deposit.
It's gonna be $250.
If you listen to what she said, she kinda just didn't mess up her agreement. But, but in the long run, she probably could have used her electric back on a lot sooner, especially if somebody actually knew about it. Laura knew about it, right? Laura knew about it the next day?
I don't know.
I called Laura and asked her, when Amber called me, I reached out to Laura. And Laura said, yeah, she's, she did, she was supposed to be turned back on.
Well, then she's supposed to be turned back on, just, I don't know. At that point, you probably should just give her back her deposit, but the thing is, is if she was, not if I don't mean, but her 35, but one time, but that case, she should have, I mean, if she paid her $300 like she was asked to pay, that kind of, that kinda messed everything up right there. I mean, it kinda put her right.
Well, did you say she broke her agreement?
Yes, she did.
So if she broke the agreement, did the $300 really suffice?
No, it did not.
What the agreement was?
No, it did not.
Well, then she technically shouldn't have been turned back on.
Well, she, she told her. It was for the 300.
But that's.
She told her. No, she, she broke her original agreement, and then she was told $300. She paid at $300. So she did, you know what I'm saying? Even though she was, she broke the original, said, hey, I'm working with you if you pay $300, and that's what she paid.
So that's, that's.
It just didn't get turned back on, that's all.
She paid.
I thought once they broke an agreement, they were with that, that you have to pay all of it.
Mm-hmm.
So all of it.
All of it is over, she owes over $1,000.
So then she should have had, you should have told her, I'm sorry, you need to pay $1,000 before we pull you back on.
But because, but because she has kids, and she has this, just like Rosalie said, I agreed to say, hey, if you pay this $300, I'll cut you on. But even though you broke the agreement, I was trying to help her.
But now we're gonna run into that timeframe to where you have to leave her on.
Yes.
Either that, or she's gonna get energy assistance possibly.
No, it, during the moratorium, December 1st, you cannot cut them off, period.
Yeah, we can, and that's coming up very soon. So she should have.
It should have brought it back to what we agreed to.
She should have been told $1,000, or you're not getting turned back on again.
That's what should have been done.
And that's not forthcoming with how much she actually owed when she called you?
No. She told me she paid the amount that she was told to pay. I didn't ask her how much it was, although I actually had a copy of the disconnect list. So when I found out what her name was, I knew she was on that list. I just, if I had a copy of a list and it said $300 and some dollars, wouldn't you assume that was the amount she owed?
No, I think what happens is people, it becomes a tendency in this town that people call you because they wanna get something done, and they're not giving you all the information. And then it's a breakdown in communication because you didn't call the clerk.
That list was in the clerk or Laura's handwriting. It was not.
And that's not what I'm saying.
How did you, how did you get, how did you get the copy of the list?
I seen one of the guys at work. They come right up to me and I can see it. They told me they turned it off. I said, what are you guys doing? They said, they're turning off lists. So they showed me the list. He said they had, what, 14 people in it? Well, we can't see that?
They got copies of it?
We can't see that?
No.
I don't want, I don't want to know that y'all got a, a list with my name on it if I'm on a disconnect notice. That's between me and the clerk.
I don't.
Why does that have something to do with you?
It's, it's public record for us who gets shut off.
Why is it public record for you?
Because we're a municipality utility, and we are involved in it.
Okay, so what happens if I come to, why, why? I just don't understand why you five have to have a list with disconnect notice. Do you have a list with everybody's bill on it?
I don't know.
And why not? If you can have a disconnect, why don't you have a full list of everybody? Muzz the word, huh? Because you shouldn't have it.
There's no, there's nothing that says you shouldn't have that. We have the right to have that list if we, if we.
It's not your business, though. You see, it's a domino effect of, there, you prefaced it with there's a communication issue with the clerk's office. But then you were given partial communication, and then you set up here and gave partial communication to make the clerk look bad because why did this happen? I want to know, I want to know. When the individual did not tell you exactly how much their bill was. When had you went to the clerk's office outside of this meeting and said, hey, Malika, I got this phone call, what's going on with this? You would have gotten all your information. Instead of up here now, where once again, Kingsford Heights on social media looking like baboons because we're arguing about something, a list that you probably shouldn't have, or somebody coming to you about a clerk's issue when they shouldn't be coming to you.
All right.
For what does the clerk know you have that?
So, so some other municipalities that represent smaller towns, they, they'll do a shut off list to the council, but it won't be names, it'll just be account numbers. So, that's what we, other towns do.
That would be smart. The point is, whether I should have known that or not, I was prepared for trouble. I, at least I knew what part of the situation was going to be. And if Malika told her she would settle for $300 or $330 or whatever dollars, it doesn't matter how much money she owed us. Malika had said that's what she would settle for. That's what the girl paid, and the girl still waited 48 hours to get turned on. Now, I'm sorry, if she paid what she was settled for, that's not, that's not on me, that's not on anybody else. She did what she committed to do to get her utilities back on, period.
And so you had to wait until this time to bring this up? Because it seems to me the whole meeting, you've been playing a gotcha game.
I'm sorry, it looks like that to you.
It is that.
But I need everyone to be aware of what is going on, period. That, that, that people are not communicating with each other, and we have had this discussion more than once.
But you're one of them. You're the main culprit.
No.
Yes, you are. Why couldn't you have gone to the office when this happened?
The office?
And talked to someone?
The office was already closed, and that was Friday, and today is Monday.
You could have gone up there today. Why didn't you go up there this morning?
I couldn't get out of my driveway.
And more.
You gave up everybody else's.
I did later, but Joe picked me up in a bigger vehicle.
But you didn't bring it up to her? Because you were busy looking for stuffing plates. Gotcha.
You know what? Let me do my council job.
We're, we're trying to allow you to do that, but you have so many.
You're out of order too.
Well, there's, there's a lot of things. There's a lot of gotcha.
Are we at public comment yet?
No.
Well, let's follow the agenda.
We were on new business, and Joe said he had one, oh, we did the Baker Tilly.
Yeah.
We are on new, on public comment now, and public comment.
Can I do attorney report?
Oh, yeah. Did I skip you?
You did. I need to prepare your salary ordinance.
Oh, yes, I had that for you.
Okay, perfect. So I didn't know if there was gonna be changes or anything to that.
Um, I made some notes I wanna talk to the council about. Social Security, I based it on Social Security. They had a 2.5 increase. And the numbers on the left side are what the people are making now. So the right side is the ranges that exist right now, and there's really only.
So the right side's the low range, and that's the high range?
No. Okay. Excuse me. This is the present salary ordinance. This is what these numbers need to be and what the words need to be, because we don't have the part time anymore.
Oh, okay, okay.
Whatever we keep that deposit.
Laura, Deputy Lieutenant Treasurer is the only one at the top end of her range, so that needs to go up. Nobody else is at the top end of their range on that salary ordinance.
Okay. And we did, uh, we did the elected official salary ordinances separate as well.
I, I didn't have that one.
Okay. Were there any changes that you guys anticipated in the budget or remain the same?
Any elected officials? I would guess they're gonna be the same, right?
No, I do the average looking of what my salary is according to the surrounding areas. And the surrounding areas for my salary is $60,000.
I know you didn't tell Baker Tilly that either when they prepared the budget.
No, I did not.
What did we decide about?
When you guys did put, when you put it in the budget, did you put in for these higher ranges than I'm assuming?
He, uh, when he was doing the budget, they had my salary at $65,000. Rosalie said, no, we weren't doing that. He had that at $65,000 on the budget.
So I think the answer.
Yes, he did. He had it at the top. Yes, he did.
Then I, okay, so I've gotta prepare the ordinances. Do I just prepare them at the same amount? I'm just gonna prepare them the same amount. If you guys wanna change it by amendments, then you can change it by amendments. And then I'll prepare this one too. Okay.
Well, once they're done, you can't change an elected official in the middle of the year.
Correct, this is for 2026.
Right.
Well, I meant by before it's passed, so if you wanna make amendments on second reading, on first reading. That's what I meant, before it's adopted. That's all I have.
All right. Questions and comments from the public on town business? You have to identify yourself for her recording.
Marika Beatty. So, um, I wanted to know first, we were supposed to have a building permit increase. That was two meetings ago, and it hasn't been brought up since. What has happened with that?
Last I knew, Malika was going to calculate some of ours, because what the information we got was like on square footage.
No, I wasn't gonna do that.
Oh, you were going to do that?
Yeah, I've been pretty busy.
Okay, so we don't have the comparison yet?
My next thing is, um, is it true that you and Joey both work for Mr. Parkman?
No, who told you that?
No, you don't supervise the.
I work for Mrs. Parkman.
The storage department.
I work for Nancy.
How do I work for Mr. Parkman?
And you haven't done any type of, um, gutters or anything for Parkman?
For Parkman? No, I did it for More &amp; More Housing.
More &amp; More Housing, okay.
I did one job.
Okay, as a citizen and taxpayer of Kingsford Heights, I feel like anything that has to do with building permits or anything where Parkman is the contractor, I think you all should recuse yourselves from the vote. Um, I know last, earlier part of the year, we had a increase in down payments that was supposed to be passed. This is Joey, this is when you were president. And it took a longer period of time than it actually should have been for that ordinance to be read. And the town actually probably lost about $20,000 because it took so long for that to be read into being an ordinance.
For down payments on what, Pam?
Pardon?
Down payments on what?
For your utility.
Hookup charges.
Hookup charges. So I think that because of your personal motives behind that, I think you should recuse yourselves from that. The second thing is, and I have my timer on, um, I got about a minute and a half left, is I think that town elected officials should refrain from putting, uh, town business or town, um, jargon on social media. Um, our town is being built up. We have more homes out here. Our school system just had a wonderful, um, thing that happened with the school system that was outshined because we were too busy on social media talking about somebody getting hung up on. And it came from the town president. It was a terrible look. And I think you should refrain from putting that type of stuff on social media. And you're the only one up here who does that.
I'd like to comment about doing any kind of work for Mark Parkman. I don't do anything for Park, Mark Parkman. I did one gutter job for him, and that was it. That was over on the house. That was for More &amp; More Housing. I don't make no money doing that building inspector's job. I mean, for you to get up there and make me look like I'm taking some kind of money on the side or something like that.
I never said that.
Well, I don't know, you was headed that way, so we might not have said, but we know what your intentions were.
That was not my intention.
That's, that's not how it's operated around here. I do the building inspector's job out here pretty damn good, and I don't want anybody to sit up here and tell me that I'm doing something wrong when I'm not. So I, I appreciate if you wouldn't make them speculations at me, because that is not just what's going on.
I never made any speculations. That's what you summed up yourself. I never said.
You brought up me and Rosalie.
I never said that.
That's, that's enough.
Well, the thing is, I'm building inspector in here, and I don't get paid for that job.
I know that.
But I take, I take care of our town, and I'm not gonna be, be looking like I'm trying to rip somebody off in town.
I know that.
That's why I don't get on Facebook either, because it's all a bunch of bullshit out there anyway. And everybody on that Facebook should be embarrassed the way that they talk about our town, let alone anybody else, elected official.
And in my defense, I will say, I was talking about a personal issue, not a town issue, and everybody blew it out of proportion.
And, and I would like to say that was not true on your behalf, because when you called me and you talked to me about said sign, I told you that it was my bad about not telling Randy. You went on to say that it's bad communication. You paused. I hung up when you paused. I did not hang up on you. I called Randy at that point and said, you can put the sign up. You went back and called Laura on the phone and said that I hung up on you and you didn't appreciate it. I did not hang up on you. But on the same token, I don't appreciate you chastising me on the phone because you are not my boss.
No, I did that as a citizen. And.
But you called as the president.
Most people that I know say goodbye when they're ending a phone conversation. That is why I felt like I was hung up on. That's all. Any other comments? Crystal?
I'm sorry, I forgot something went out there. This is a sign that was hanging up when we did the painting. I'm not really sure what we need to do to rectify it or to fix it, but it's.
That has to be up for the fire marshal.
Yeah, but it probably has to be updated. It says 2008.
I think next meeting, you should show it to the fire department.
I did, and he said he can help us, but he said something about going to the.
There's a fee for that inspection.
So that's not something I do. I don't pay fees. I don't know.
Is that for the extinguisher?
No, the extinguishers are checked in October.
That's the permit for this building to be occupied.
So I think it's something that the council has to follow up with. She said, he said something about this is downstate, and this is in town, in Lepore. But when you go to Lepore, then they'll get in touch with him, and he'll come out and do it.
Well, they used to send invoice for this every year and tell us when they were coming out to inspect.
Well, if they haven't been here since 2008, they probably don't think we exist anymore. I don't know.
Somebody's laid up.
I just leave it for you guys to figure that one out, okay? I don't know. I don't know what to do about it.
Put it in the closet for now, and Laura or. Malika, there should be a file in the community center files with the annual operating permit from the state of Indiana for this building. Malika, there should be a file in the community center files with the, uh, annual operating permit from the state of Indiana for this building.
And then the fire marshal said he does do something, but he said something has to happen in La Porte first.
Okay.
Who's yours? Is this your file that I gave you?
Just reading over it.
Any further questions? Motion to adjourn seven fifty PM.
I second it.
Oh, I guess I made it. Okay.
Yeah, sounded good.